We'll call this meeting to order, a regular meeting of March 10th at 6:30 at the Willits City Council. And would Kathy lead us in the pledge and then take the roll?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
Tony.
Here.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Here. Okay. We welcome Public Communications. And as you know, we're meeting by Zoom under the, or not Zoom, but GoToMeeting, under the provisions of the Governor's orders to be safe from COVID. And it is now time, if there's any members of the public who would like to speak to us on matters that are not on the agenda but are relevant to the city, this is your opportunity to do so. Is there anybody who would like to address us? If so, unmute yourself and speak up. Hearing nobody, we will move on. We do not have any public matters agendas today. There are some items later on in the agenda. So we're moving, and no enactment of ordinances either. So we're moving to the consent calendar. Item 5A. A is City Council minutes of January 6th and February 24th. And B is a resolution accepting the construction completion of the Willits Downtown Improvement Project and authorizing a notice of filing completion. And C is a resolution approving the joining of the Employment Risk Management Authority, JPA, for employment practices liability coverage. And this is, yeah, those are our consent calendar items. Is there any council member who would like to pull any item off of that calendar?
I would like, this is Larry, and I'd like to comment on B, not to say anything. I just want to congratulate the people. Thank you.
Okay. I would also join in congratulating them for that very nice completion. Looks good. If there are no other calls for A.
Set agenda.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, so it's been moved with someone seconding the approving the consent calendar?
I'll second.
Okay, that was Greta Connie. And is there any public comment? And hearing none, we will have a roll call vote. So Kathy.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Str- uh, excuse me, Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yeah.
And Mayor Strong.
Yes. So there is, there are no informational reports tonight. We're moving on to Commissions, Agencies, and Authorities. We're not meeting as the planning commission tonight. And so, or the successor agency. So we're going to go to City Managers' Reports and Recommendations. And so, Brian, would you like to take this part of the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So we have two items on there. The first one is an informational item for the council's pleasure to understand what is happening with this project. This is the underground utility, undergrounding project that was presented to the City Council back in 2019. And since 2019, not much has been done on the project, not a lot of progress. There is justification for that, and that comes down to the costs involved. And I did some research on this, talked to PG&E staff, and wanted to get a good understanding of what we're looking at with this project, so I can better serve the council and advise on future actions on this project. So literally, this is an informational item. As illustrated or documented in the attached memo, we're looking at a, it's a great project for the community, but we're looking at a shortfall of approximately $500,000. And that memo outlines where we are with the funding or the work credits that essentially would be the funds from that PG&E would allocate towards the project. There are a couple of options listed in that memo. I'm not asking for direction right now. Like I said, knowing that in the next couple of weeks here, we're going to be setting goals as well as establishing budgets. And I thought this was a timely item to bring before the council and look at some options. And if we want to move ahead, or do we re-sculpt the project to bring it closer to where we are, where the current work credit allocation, or do we look at something totally different that meets the budget? So that's what's there. It's PG&E still holding those work credits for the city. They're not going anywhere since they're attached to or assigned to a resolution that, as I noted, was adopted by the council back in 2019. PG&E would like to know what we would be doing in the near future, but they're not placing any pressure on us. Questions?
Anyone in the council? Yes, Jerry.
A question, Brian. So if we were in a position where we wanted to kind of shell this for years, so is there any danger that our money would be lost or just submit something to PG&E on its?
No. The resolution is essentially a placeholder for the project. PG&E is an active, valid project. They have recognized it. That resolution adopted by the council is holding everything in place. There is some talk among PG&E, PG&E staff, that the Rule 20 program may go away within eight years, five to seven years. And if that's the case, then we would need to decide well before then, how we're going to utilize the work credits.
Give us a few years. Greta?
Brian and I talked about this a bit during our weekly meeting, and I couldn't quite recall why the City Park, Snyder Park project was brought forward. I don't, I didn't see through, think that it was community-driven. And I was telling Brian a little bit about past history on ReBiteEd, and the only time that I recall community members asking about those undergrounding credits and asking for them to be used in Willits was the group that came to ReBiteEd and asked for a sort of redo of the West Van Lane area near the community theater. And they, you know, had it in their mind that they wanted that to be a nice pedestrian walkway, lit, you know, the, all the overhead wires be gone so that people who were going to the theater would have a nice, safe pathway. At that time, I seem to recall that we had enough credits to be able to cover the cost of undergrounding that section of Van Lane. So I don't know if the council wants to reconsider the project and maybe think about doing something that's more in the scope of what we actually have as far as those credits go, and something that really truly is community-driven, or if we want to stick to this Bud Sniker project. But I just thought I'd throw that out there, my recollection of what those funds were, you know, at least asked for by community members.
This is Larry.
Yes, Larry, go ahead.
This one has been on the books since the end of the 80s, and I don't know where they came up with the 2019 on it, but I've heard about it since the 80s. And it was because of the trees. And they kept trimming the trees around the park, and so it was put on the agenda to keep it from going underground and then the trees could grow up. So whether that's still something that needs to be considered, but that's where it came from, and it's that far down, and I know about it because we owned the Victorian at one time, and that was a hot topic at that particular time. Thank you.
So any other comments on this? So it seems we are not in, we're not being asked for direction yet, but perhaps as part of a priority setting or staff might look into kind of the pro and con of those other alternatives if we want to go that direction, that we're kind of putting it on the back burner.
Yes, I think, you know, I think the project would add tremendous value to the community, especially that location. But, you know, we're looking at nearly $500,000, and that was 2019 estimate, so, and we accrued work credits at an amount of approximately $23,000. So we're a little bit leaves off with the map. We can, you know, look at scaling that project back, maybe new phases of it, and go look to that other location, Van Lane. We had a department head meeting this morning, and that was introduced. That was a project that was brought to, was made aware to the city staff through public concern, so that might have some merit as well, and that may be a project more in the fiscal scope. But like I said, I just did some fact-finding. I wanted to get that information out. And, you know, as we're setting priorities, both for projects, goal setting, and budgets, if this is still a valid project, we'll look to allocate some funds to it.
Okay. All right. When and if this does come up for a more direction, it would be really good to make sure that the community's given an opportunity to know that it's on the agenda and comment because, you know, we don't get too many community members weighing in, and it's very helpful to know what people's thoughts are. So then item B is the staffing change in the Administration Department.
I just see Karen popped up there. Hello, Karen, haven't seen you in a while. So what we're looking to do here is to, we took a comprehensive look at the Administration Department, and this was a, an item that was set forth several years ago. The previous city manager initiated this act, expect of the department as work witness Stevenson on improving her skills and increasing her footprint within the organization, with some expectations that a, you know, elevating the position to an HR manager and fully acknowledging the role that, you know, Karen Stevenson does for the organization as a critical member of the management team here internally. So, you know, we looked at the notes, the previous manager left me some history on it, and I took a look at it, and I thought it was appropriate, and I have put it on the agenda, put it on the agenda for discussion, but it's something that I think is necessary to oversee and implement for the benefit of the organization.
So shall we just go to some council member questions or comments about this?
Yes.
All right. Any council member want to speak up? Is that Larry?
Larry. She's getting a stipend now. When she gets the increase, will she still get the stipend?
No.
No. Okay. That answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. And I think that the overall impact, because she wouldn't get that extra stipend anymore, is about a 5% raise, is what I remember?
Yes.
From the report?
You know, technically, yes. So basically what this new HR manager classification does for the city, it recognizes the task and the services that that position is providing to the organization currently, and through the stipends. And the stipends are both a benefit and also a hindrance, especially on the side of first, you know, it doesn't make that employee whole for the work they provide as they look towards completing their career, entering retirement. It's not fair to them, so that's adjustment that needs to be made due to the salary.
Okay. Other questions or comments from council members?
Is this?
Yes, Jerry.
Brian, is this, whoever this, is this something that would be factored in with either budget, or is this something you're enacting for the?
It is, it's going to need to be amended into the budget. We have talked to Andy Heath. He's aware of it. There are savings that's going to be made, but there's also going to be some expenditures. You know, time this gets put into place and we run out of budget, there will be a budget amendment that's going to come before the council with some other items that are rolled into it. But the difference is going to be, the difference between what we're currently outlining towards the position as the HR analyst and where it needs to go as HR manager, it's a minor adjustment. Yes, it's unbudgeted. There was some discussion that we thought Andy was going to have in the budget. I probably missed that, I haven't worked with Andy, but he has reassured both Karen and I that the numbers are there to support the position as it runs out to the end of this fiscal year.
So we're talking about implementing it fairly quickly, not waiting till the 2021 budget?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
The other question I had was that I know Karen, and thank you Karen, for having taken on a tremendous amount of tasks that were not getting taken care of when we have been understaffed quite a while, that is part of the, looking at the whole organization, especially the administrative tasks, to get some of the more clerical or bookkeeping kinds of tasks off of Karen's workload so that she has a more high-level overview of the whole human resources. Is that, is that part of where we're heading with this? Brian?
Was that a question?
Yeah. Yeah. Because we've been.
Yeah, so basically, you know, we, I say we, I've been here for two and a half months now, but internally, you know, the organization looks at that position as an HR manager provides expertise during negotiation, salary adjustments. We're looking to essentially make it from a non-exempt to exempt because with a lot of extra hours, that needs to be justified and corrected.
Karen, did you want to add something to that?
Well, I am exempt already. I am in management, but I'm taking on the role of three people. So it's really only a 5% increase because I get the stipend, but it will be convertible, which is what I'm looking for. We are hoping that at some point we can hire a qualified accountant to assist. Jessica Mel, who's very talented and has done a tremendous amount of work, but we haven't found somebody that has municipality experience that could take on some of the financial tasks that I'm having to take on in the payroll.
Well, as I said, I really appreciate that you have been willing to take on extra tasks, because otherwise they were falling into a black hole. So that's been great. But I also see that, you know, we need to backfill some of the, of the jobs when we can, where we can find appropriate people. So any other comments from council? If not, I would like to hear if there's any comments from the public on this approval of a human resources manager position. And hearing none, I would accept if anyone would like to make a motion on the staff recommendation.
Oh, I will make the motion on the staff recommendation, and I read your comment. I think it's needed. I think Karen needs compensated, but as we go into a goal-setting, want to make sure as we're carving up our, our new tax money, so to speak, that we're mindful as far as what we're spending as a big picture. Want to make sure that all of this is factored in. So that's my motion. Comment.
Yes. Any other comment or a second from a council member? I will second the motion, because I'm allowed to do that. And I agree with Jerry. Normally, it would be good to wait until the budget to make this adjustment, but I know that it's been already on hold, essentially, you know, anticipating this for at least a year and a half. And Karen's been very patient with the explanation that we didn't have enough money, and we didn't know, 100K, et cetera. But really, she's been working out of class for, I don't know, at least a year and a half, maybe more than that. So I feel like this is a very appropriate midstream adjustment. And also, the salary compensation information that we reviewed last, last time, and I think that is public information now, I'm not sure, but basically, it indicates that human resources in other places are compensated above what we've been doing.
Well, the job itself matched the job, was the analyst's job. Only the one of the three jobs that I did was matched with the other analysts in that salary compensation survey, so the other two jobs were not factored in.
Ah, okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And it is a very responsible and important position that Karen's been fulfilling. So there's a motion and a second. I'm not hearing any other comments, so I guess Kathy would like to call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes, but I would ask that we not have anything else come before us until the next, the next budget meeting. This feels a little, for me, it feels a little bit awkward not to do this when we're, we're looking at other positions, considering that there's been some ability for self-advocacy for this particular position versus advocacy for other positions, although I think it's very much deserved and therefore I'm voting yes. Thank you.
Mayor Strong?
Yes. So are there any verbal reports from Brian?
No, no further information at this time.
Okay. And I guess I would just add that this being March, we're going to be moving towards the situation where at the second meeting in March, we'll hear more departmental, or maybe in advance of that meeting even, some departmental summaries. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, so we're working on that internally right now. I'm starting to receive the reports from department heads, starting to format them for the second meeting of the month. If agenda's going to change slightly as well, it's going to specifically note the departments. You'll receive the written reports in your package in advance, so you have an opportunity to review them, review the material, and then staff members would be present at your meeting to answer any questions that you have reviewing the material, or if you just want, you know, after we go through a couple of months, you, hey, where are we with that previous projects or, you know, status updates? So we're making that progress. And also, I guess one thing is, I've definitely been working with engineering, public works, utilities, on getting our hits around where the city needs to have a capital room plan as a critical element for budget prep, as well as delineating projects for the future. So we're working on that. And also going to start coordinating with Andy on budget prep. That is approaching us pretty quickly, like as noted from that last conversation. We're just trying to get our house in order here, and then, yes, we got some heavy lifting to do with our budget preparation and as we move forward with allocations for the next fiscal year.
Okay. Has the compensation study, is that a public record at this point?
No, it is not. It will be shortly. She's going to look at some adjustments. IBEW asked that we did a little deeper in regard to some positions that the consultant may not have realized were a match, and that's what we're in the process of doing.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. We're moving on to item 9A, Police Department Staffing, and that is City Manager Bender again. And of course, the chief is here also.
Yes, I'm just going to introduce it. So you do have that feature here from the packet, the subsequent graphic went out to illustrate what we're looking at with staff, trying to put together the best location and resources for the police department to accommodate their mission and provide the level of service that this community expects. There's been a lot of dialogue between the chief and myself and Andy, where we are with the allocated positions and the budget. We are prepared to answer those questions as they, I'm sure they will appear during this forthcoming discussion. But that's what we're looking at. I asked chief to look at some options for staffing regarding current budget and future budget going into fiscal year 2021, 22. And this looks like a good plan to present to the council. It's utilizing the current staffing, recognizing some internal resources, as well as how adjustments can be made internally to the framework of the organization, especially at that sergeant level, to provide support and guidance for the younger officers that are on the force. So with that introduction, I'm going to hand it over to Chief Lusaraga, and he can walk you through what we're looking at.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, if it's helpful to others, I don't know, the chart that Brian sent out, it might be nice to screen share that. And I'm not sure, because it helped, but I still have a little trouble figuring out what's shifting where. But so go ahead and try to explain it, so we can all be on the same page. Thank you.
That would be beyond my technical capability, but I don't know if Brian or Kathy might be able to shoot that out so that everybody can kind of look at it as, as we're talking about it. But basically, what we're looking at is, in the packet, you saw what our current status is as far as sergeants, lieutenant chief, officers, dispatchers, and a CS, a community service officer. And when I first got here, you know, a little over four months ago, one of the first things that I kind of wanted to look at, because it was immediately apparent that we had a very young force, and they were a dedicated group, but they were really working, you know, at both ends of the candle, if you will. So we wanted to see if there was any room anywhere to kind of help them out, and also towards an eye of running things efficiently with a, you know, as minimal an impact on the budget as possible, so that in working with what we have authorized in doing that. I had some discussions with Jim Robbins, who's the grant administrator for our COPS Grant, which is responsible for our, one of our newer officers, Natalie Higley, as well as talking to Andy Heath as far as what's in the budget, what exactly is it that we can work with. The COPS Grant Officer, which is Officer Higley, is, when we requested the grant, when we, and it was granted based on our request and outline specifications of what we would do, it was granted on a, on a condition that basically that it was going to be an additional officer and not one that was already allocated in the budget. So she should be counted as, as an addition. So she should be counted as an additional officer, which leaves her a position in the police officer rank basically vacant. What I am recommending is that we take that vacant police officer position and upgrade it to an additional sergeant position. Right now, we have two sergeant positions. One of them is filled, one of them is vacant. We have an officer working as an acting sergeant right now. So I want to add on to the ranks of the sergeant position and add an additional position there. We have been recruiting. We have somebody in the works for the current vacant sergeant position. And then we have at least a couple other people interested in an additional position if that comes to fruition. So, we take the vacant police officer position, make it a sergeant position, that still leaves us with the six patrol officers that we currently have. It leaves us with, it gives us that span of control that is really vital in any really police department, but really one where our patrol force is young and in need of mentoring, in need of coaching, guidance, in order for them, you know, continue doing things the right way and not get, you know, not go off the path in any manner. So, we have that as our recommendation. One of the things that we wanted to do and was proposed before I got here, but it's a very valid and very necessary recommendation, in my opinion, is the institution of the Department Administrative Services Coordinator, which, right now, we have our lone CSO, who is only able to go one day out of the work week to that because the rest of the time, she's in dispatch. We are currently up to speed on dispatching, but our newest one is still in training, so we can't cut her away just yet. But our CSO is responsible for the evidence room, the property room, timekeeping, training coordinator, you know, looking at classes. We want to send people, make any accommodations, all those things. Keeping up with the post requirements, and just about any other administrative project that comes down, whether it's from the city manager, city council, myself, or whatever that we need help in working on. So all of those tasks and duties would be the responsibility of the Administrative Services Coordinator. Right now, our CSO is doing those functions. She's getting the stipends for the additional duties. And so, institutionalizing that position, we figured it was going to be about a 2% increase in salary there. Overall, for the upgrading from police officer to an additional sergeant position, instituting the Department Administrative Services Coordinator, our estimate is it's going to be an additional $30,000. But we found out today that we are still budgeted for a part-time dispatcher. And that's still in the budget, that's still allocated, almost $12,000 there that we can use to offset that. We haven't used a part-time dispatcher for, I'm told, for about a year and a half. So that's still money that's being allocated that we can divert over to offset the cost of these upgrades.
Just a question, a question on that. Is it the $30,000 or, you know, being offset by some unspent other funds? But is that for the rest of this year, fiscal year? Or is that on an annualized basis?
It's been in there since the beginning of this fiscal year, so. The other need for the additional sergeant position is, as you all know, we've had a high level of turnover here in the police department where our officers get our probation, they get the basic full certificate, and either they shop it around themselves or they get, you know, headhunted by other agencies in the county or other places. And I see an additional opportunity for them to remain here if they know that, you know, there's a chance that they do well and learn everything they're supposed to, that they could advance here in this department. Right now, those positions are minimal. I'm trying to give them a reason to stick around other than, you know, any salary readjustments that the council decides to make. But it's also important for them to be interested in the job, to know that there's opportunities for career advancement. And this offers an additional rung on that career ladder that is vital to these young officers. Any questions from anybody that I can field?
I saw Jerry's hand up a bit ago, and I see Greta's hand also. So Jerry?
So I get this straight. You end up with three sergeants and lieutenant, and your CSO, I'm assuming would become your Administrative Services Coordinator, would you backfill the CSO position? And again, would it be three sergeants and a lieutenant?
It would be three sergeants and a lieutenant, yes. And backfilling the CSO, there's an opportunity there for, one of our dispatchers has received prior training as a CSO. But those are things that, you know, I need to, it doesn't need to be immediate right now, but maybe in the next fiscal year, we can look at that. And, you know, we are going to have to do a recruitment for the Administrative Services Coordinator, you know, so that all depends on, I guess, who gets the job.
I guess I'm not getting it, sir. You're talking about the event, recreate the new, I guess, and I guess I kind of, Jerry supports this because it would put you back to where I was at. And I didn't have a lieutenant, I had four sergeants when I was there. But my question is, is the CSO position going to be, if by chance that individual became the Administrative Services Coordinator, would you be killing it right away, etc.? And is that factored into this? Or is that basically as?
It's not.
It is not factored into the equation right now. According to the chief, what is being proposed is to move forward with the coordinator. And the coordinator may still fulfill some roles of the CSO as that transition from the one position to the other takes place, because the coordinator position is entirely new and has to be fitted into the position and to the organization. Yes, there is. This, the CSO position may need to be backfilled. And that expense may be incurred sometime in fiscal year '21, '22. So we would have to allocate budget for that. So I guess that's kind of what I was getting at from before when I was talking about my current situation, is that we haven't really, and I think it speaks to what Sabrina said, that we're kind of adding more on there. And I kind of want to know that we're good where we're at. Again, I support this, chief, but at the same time, I also want to make sure that, from a budget perspective, that we're talking about freezing things and then look at it in the budget and add it in. I'm all about trying to make things whole again and getting this going. But I also kind of want to make sure that we've got this, I call it an incredible gift from the community. And I want to make sure that we spend the money wisely because it's a 10-year process and, obviously, the life can change in 10 years, but I want to make sure that we light the ship in such a way that we end up with money coming. So that's my opinion.
We hear your concerns, and that was the kind of the unwritten mandate that what we were looking at internally with chief and Andy, where we are financially. You know, this proposal could have took several different directions in regard to holding a level of staff that would really have a concern budgetary on the budget. What we're doing here is, we took a very strategic look at the organization, where there's a need, and that need right now is that that mid-level within the organization was sergeant. And then, looking at the administrative coordinator position. If you look at the overall organization there at the department, they don't have that internal support mechanism that this coordinator position would bring to them. Yet, you know, we're being honest, we're being forthright with the council and the public that there's a possibility that the CSO position may need to be backfilled. We're not advocating for that right now, but that, yes, that is a strong possibility. That may happen. It's not going to happen anytime soon. It may happen sometime during the course of 21, 22 years.
Okay, I want to make sure Greta has her turn now.
So Jerry has a leg up on me because he knows what a CSO is, and I don't know what a CSO does. And so my question is, if the current CSO is going to move into this administrative services coordinator position, are there specific job functions that a CSO does that will not be attended to, in which case, that's why we would require having to backfill the CSO position? And if so, can you explain briefly what those specific job functions are that a CSO does for the community? Thank you.
Okay. The job functions that a community service officer or CSO would do is to do some parking enforcement. One of the main things that the CSO helps us out with is transports of prisoners that are arrested here in Bullets and transported to Ukiah so that patrol officers can remain here. They also do community outreach, community events. They may handle, you know, very minor reports in things that they've been trained in to look for, for completion of those reports. And that's, and what we, what I found here with our CSO here, we also have her doing, you know, evidence intake, cataloging, categorizing, and doing some, doing the administrative timekeeping for the department. Those things, which are vital and crucial, would be done by the Administrative Services Coordinator. The CSO duties that would not be done are the parking enforcement, the community outreach, and the transports. Those are things that we would be missing. And the transport more than anything else would be something that we would want to, in the future, approach and see if we could backfill that.
Thank you. In the interim, before you do advocate for the backfilling of a CSO, is the creation of this third sergeant position and the now-filled six officer positions enough to cover transport and community outreach in the, during the time when you don't have a CSO, once that CSO too has moved into the administrative coordinator position?
Yes, we, one of the things of being, you know, almost fully staffed is it allows us that leeway. And with hopefully, the county moving into a less restrictive position as far as COVID is concerned, all of our officers will be involved in community outreach, in doing other things, you know, not only traffic enforcement, parking enforcement as well. And those are things that, you know, it's necessary for, to have the supervision to be able to say, hey, let's go out and do this tonight, or stay on point or focused with this program. So all of those things will be able to be able to do again, you know, simply because we would now have the resources to do it.
Thank you, and I really appreciate you taking the time to answer these questions. Sometimes it might feel like we want to just race through these things, but the more I think council members can explain the specific roles and the duties that our police department performs, I think the better educated our public can be and have a deeper appreciation for your department. So I really appreciate the time, sir.
No problems, my pleasure.
Jerry?
And chief, I guess I also wanted to put it out to the public too that as part of the COPS grant, it's a community engagement grant. So that's important as far as getting that engagement out there in different forms that you guys see fit. You know, that whatever you guys come up with, as far as that is documented so that it can be reported for the grant. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yes, and as you know, Jerry, there's so many things that we could do, you know, once we're allowed to be out amongst the people. And as far as community outreach, being visible, doing footbeats, doing, you know, coffee with a cop, neighborhood watch, all those things that, you know, is part of, obviously, my philosophy. But in talking to, you know, everybody here, they miss that. They miss that, being able to do that outreach, do that interaction, go to the schools, you know, take part in programs. And so, you know, it's things that they're itching to get back into, which is great, because then that's less push that we have to do. We just have to do, make sure that, you know, they're doing it in the right way and all that. So, yeah, those are things that we take into account, and we know the grant requirements, and, you know, we have to abide by them.
I have a question on the, not the CSO, but the COPS. It's a grant-funded position, and I think it only goes for three years. And then, but we have a commitment to keep that person on or that position on after the grant funding is expired. So that will then become another ongoing regular staff member of the police department. Is that correct?
Correct. Part of the, what's written into the grant, when they grant it, is that, you know, once the grant money runs out, that we would still fulfill that commitment to keep that person, to keep that position, and to keep him in the community outreach aspect of it.
When does that grant?
Sorry?
Go ahead, Brian.
I was just about to say, that's why that grant program has a three-year term. It allows the community to recognize the value of that officer in the community and start preparing a budget to support it after the grant terminates.
And when does it terminate?
It's a three-year.
It just, it was granted last year, so 2022, I believe.
All right, so that won't impact the '21, '22 budget eventually. Yes, Jerry, please.
I just wanted to point out that it's a three-year grant as far as the process, but part of the grant is that we have to keep the individual on another year afterwards. That's on our dime in order to fulfill the requirements.
That won't be, okay. But that isn't going to hit us this coming fiscal year, maybe not even the one after that or part of it. So, yeah. All right. So are there comments or questions from our council members? And any comment or questions from our public out there? And I'm not hearing any. So I'm assuming that you are asking for this shifting of positions to happen now rather than waiting to the fiscal year '21, '22 budget? Is that, if that's correct, then we, yeah, okay. So do we have a motion for the thus recommended changes in the police department?
This is Sabrina, and I'll make the motion. I believe that public safety has been a top priority, and when we went out for the sales task measure, we immediately figured that this was a priority for us. I don't feel like this is something new. This is something that I feel like has been part of our plan. So I feel comfortable with moving forward with a motion.
I'll second you. And Jerry's seconding? Okay. Okay, any other comments? Otherwise, we're going to move to the vote, and I will call on Kathy to do roll call for the vote. Thank you, Kathy.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez. Mayor Stone.
Yes. Great. Yes, we, we really do, um, I, I agree with what Suprema's comments just now, that this was one of the highest priorities and not only, um, what we, you know, presented when we did Measure K, but it's, um, really important for retention, and, um, so I'm really glad we're doing this. Okay, and we are now.
Thank you all for your support.
Nine, thank you. Nine B is, um, the revised agreement with community services. Ryan Bender.
Uh, it's almost a housekeeping matter, um, especially when we had references to Measure K, um, during that discussion of the department staffing. Uh, this is the agreement that is going to allow our consultant community services, uh, to track the, uh, additional Measure K activity. Uh, this allows them to reach out to the state to acquire, uh, that information on our behalf and present those reports to us, so we understand, um, what is happening on the commercial side within the community. So it is a straightforward item. Um, any questions, I am available.
Okay. And the housekeeping sort of thing to make sure that they are authorized to get the information that they need to analyze. Any questions for?
I just wanted to move staff recommendation.
Thank you, Jerry. And a second, anybody? Greta is going to second that, and if there's any comments from the public? And hearing none, we'll call roll.
Councilmember, councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez. Mayor Stone.
Yes. And now we get to hear from Bob Peralt, who is labeled as Kim Smith, but we know it's Bob Peralt. We're very happy to see you, Bob.
Well, thank you, Madam.
The city goals setting workshop process, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I'll ask Kathy to start the, uh, part of the, uh, thank you for, like, everybody, now that I, in fact, not Kim Smith. Uh, I appreciate that, and, uh, couple of things I'd like to give to the presentation itself. Uh, I want to say I'm very glad to be back within the City of Willets even for a temporary time, and I really am thankful that, uh, the council took an interest in contacting me and having me perform these services for you. The other things I'd, I'd like to say, uh, first of all, I was very excited to hear that the work got from the downtown plan has been completed. I think that is a really, really big step, and having been involved in some of those initial discussions a long time ago, uh, that's, uh, that's a great accomplishment. The other thing I wanted to say is, is to compliment the council on listening to the questions regarding the various different items, and especially the budget questions, I think they are very, very good and appropriate, and I'm thinking that as you go through this goal-setting session and some of the work that you're going to have to do with it, that you'll actually, uh, uh, begin to, uh, have a vision of, of what the, the answers to some of those questions are. So if we can go to the next slide, Kathy. Kathy, next slide.
Okay, it's showing it on my end, but not on there.
There we go. Uh, so by way of, yes.
Wait for, jiggle your audio cord, your, your, uh, audio is fritzing out.
Oh, boy. Hate to have that. Okay, is that any better? And I'll certainly try to get a little closer as well.
That sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, what is goal-setting? Uh, goal-setting is something that the City of Willets is familiar with. Uh, it's a, you've actually practiced goal-setting in the past several years ago, um, with some success. Goal-setting is an important part of, uh, developing the budget, and in some ways it may be considered the most important, uh, part. Uh, what it does is actually places the council in the lead position, uh, for budget development. This wasn't always the case, uh, in years past, when I was a much younger city manager than what you see today. Essentially, department heads and staff went away and drafted their budgets pass based largely on, on, on past expenditures and estimates of what kind of revenue was available, and those expenditures and revenue, uh, estimates were reviewed by the city manager, and ultimately the council would receive just about a complete document, uh, very thick by early June, and that would have been the first contact with the budget. So this really puts you in the, in the lead position. It, uh, offers the council and the organization to take stock. Uh, several of your questions were, were aimed at that, and you'll take, uh, part of the process, you'll be gathering information, getting reports, et cetera, that, that will help you to, uh, sort out what you think, uh, the council priorities ought to be. It often and always should have, uh, a, a public input, uh, and, uh, from the community as opposed to, uh, financial, uh, process. And what happens as a result of the completion of the process and the adoption of this, uh, statement of goals is, is I propose, is that this statement of goals will actually develop the physical, uh, development of the budget. Kathy, next slide. Next slide.
And watch out, watch out again, Bob, for, um, if there's any jiggle on your computer or something, because it, it's mostly clear, but every once in a while it kind of tackles and we can't, yeah.
And I'll apologize for that. Uh, introduction to, uh, goal-setting, uh, as I've already said, the council will adopt a goal statement that will contain a re, a list of realistic goals that should be constructed in a building block manner. And what do I mean by that? Well, actually, as I indicated in one of my attachments, the city has, like, a mission statement. The mission statement should, uh, detail how the city views itself and the actions the city will take. Okay, we're, we're making adjustments, we'll see if that works a little bit better. Um, the mission set statement needs to be periodically reviewed and, and updated. The goal statement should contain goals that capture the council's prioritization leading down from the mission statement itself. Kathy, next. The council, um, introducing, uh, to the goal-setting continued, the goals that you eventually adopt should be goals that are capable of measurement. The goals in general should be, uh, listed or unrecommending, they'd be listed into three categories ultimately, uh, by the end of the process. The first is, uh, uh, goals that are considered to be major goals, uh, number two is other important goals. Three are available. Terms of major goals, some of major goals can take literally years to complete. Uh, these are the overarching goals that the council wishes to accomplish. I've listed an example of what might be considered an overarching goal, again in the attachment, that was the example of economic development. It had various different components within the goal itself. The goal is then supported by two or three projects that, uh, are very measurable, in fact, those projects are projects that should be, uh, you remember them from when I was here. Other goals, as I've stated, are important and the resources are available. They, again, should be completed only as resources permit. And then there is finally number three, goals that can be identified as, uh, uh, desirable, but they should only be conducted, uh, if resources, uh, somehow become available, putting them out there, signing on to that, because you need to have a long-term plan, and ultimately this is what that, uh, what that process will lead to. Okay, Kathy, we're ready for the next one? There we go. There are different components, uh, associated with the goal development, uh, process. Obviously, communication among the team members themselves is extremely important. Uh, key elements of a good, uh, communication system are trust and respect for team members, understanding of member roles and responsibilities. As you know, I'm meeting, uh, you may physically open the next couple of days, and we'll be conducting a, uh, a communications workshop on Saturday at, uh, 10:00 a.m. Next, public, uh, participation is extremely important. I know you all know this, you don't need me to tell you that. Uh, we're trying to accomplish a lot in a short period of time. Um, the public participation is important, and I was suggesting, Kathy, Brian, think about using social media because it can help. Uh, public communication.
A lot?
Yes.
I want to interrupt for just a second. You have the communication workshop here saying Saturday, March 20th? I thought we were doing that.
You're correct, it's this Saturday. Yes, that's correct.
This Saturday? Okay.
This Saturday.
Thank you.
Public participation is important and across, since, uh, social media can be helpful. In other commu, communities I've seen where Survey Monkey has been used, uh, rather quickly to sample, let's say, what are the five most important, uh, items that the citizens would like to see the city take on? Of course, public communication should be encouraged at each of the meetings throughout the process, and as we go through and mention, that will actually give the community, uh, the ability to weigh in and, uh, be able to participate and maybe even comment on some of those goals that are being held. Um, I think the background workshop is extremely important, and I'm suggesting that should take place next Wednesday, the 17th, at 6:30 p.m. This per, this is, is, is to conduct that status check that I talked about previously. This workshop would include maybe a review of the mission statement to make sure that everyone still feels that it's appropriate and in order, and then obviously, uh, some public participation. But I also think it's going to be important to, number one, get an update, uh, from Brian on, uh, revenues and projected revenues, and, uh, as he sees coming down the line, if he can, not only for the next year, but maybe the next couple of years. I know it's, it's difficult sometimes to project things out, but obviously some of the things that you're talking about will have, uh, multi-year impacts, so being able to, uh, look at those revenues, this is a good thing. I think he laid a good foundation with that when he did the mid-year review, which I think was done last month, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, then along with the review of the revenue should come an identification and a discussion regarding challenges and opportunities. Every, every city, especially small cities, certainly have their, uh, a number of challenges and opportunities, and these should be reviewed this part of the process so that they can be addressed in the goal-setting itself. And, and then there should be brief, uh, department presentations, uh, that, you can kind of update from the department head's perspective on, uh, the type of, uh, uh, work that they're doing and the challenges that, that, uh, they see. Okay, Kathy, if we could go to the next slide? There we go. Perhaps, perhaps the most important thing is actually nominating candidate goals. Uh, a ton. Starting a couple of tasks on your own. I know some of you may have already, uh, you got your work on. I'm asking you to draft up to five, what I call candidate goals, with one or two implementations that could be used, uh, you know, these could be projects. Candidate goal statements should be one to three sentences in length. The reason for that is that'll give us a sense and a little bit better idea of what you're thinking about, uh, by putting together, uh, the, the, uh, goal statements themselves. I'm not asking you to write one, uh, that, that wouldn't be appropriate, but certainly if, if you can come up with five, that's great. If you come up with more, that's great, less is always fine. Uh, my guidance here would be, be creative. Goals can include past efforts as well as new, you don't have to reinvent the, the, the book, so to speak. Um, and also remember that the meeting holds together, you need to modify them after, uh, the, uh, after the, the, uh, the background meeting has held. I would suggest that you try and get the statements to, to the city manager by the end of the workday on Thursday, March 18th. I know that that, again, is a, a, a little bit of a rush, uh, of time, uh, but we're trying to make everything work by, in March 4th, so that you'll be able to provide the guidance that the budget needs. The candidate goals will then be reviewed by your city manager and myself. Uh, we'll use some judgment, flexibility, uh, in terms of trying to organize the goals stated into various theme areas, and if, uh, in, in areas of the goal statements or candidate goals who are repeating themselves, we'll try and do our best to combine them. Okay, Kathy, next? Kathy, next?
It's taken.
There we go. Then we, this leads us to the goal-setting workshop itself. Uh, goal-setting workshop, we'll, in that, if you came in on that date, uh, it is for Saturday, March 20th at 10:00 a.m. Uh, at that time, uh, you will be presented with a list of, uh, goals, uh, that the city manager and I may have modified slightly to help facilitate, uh, the process. You will then review the goals as we present them to, and finalize. And I would suggest that you may probably employ, and, and especially as. And I would suggest that you may publicly employ, especially as to those goals. Then, we're going to ask you to teach their individual council member what the criteria is, and you will rate the goals on a scale of one to four, with four being the most important. Once you've rated the goals, we'll take break, staff will complete the tabulation, and then we'll bring their results back to you. Those goals will be presented to the council for a review. And it's possible that maybe even with the tabulation, you'll have a discussion that will slightly modify whatever that rating may be. And ultimately, what we hope will happen is by the end of this meeting, you then have a draft set of goals that will be viewed in that development of a goal statement that you would then, that's the same agenda place, on any council agenda for March 24th. At that time, the council would be asked to take the final action and then provide, in essence, the direction to staff for the development of the budget. Essentially, that's the process that I've worked up for you. Certainly, it can be changed or modified even at this point. I'm certainly available for questions that I'm sure Brian has, or any kind of answers we can provide relative to the report that's been provided. I think what I'm recommending is that the council essentially approve the report and direct city staff to implement the process as outlined in the report. I'd be happy, Danny, answer any questions you might have. Credit?
Thank you so much for this presentation and for the written report as well. It's incredibly helpful and I appreciate the structure that you're providing. My biggest concern about this is I'm worried that we will get limited public input if the only chance for the public to weigh in is two weeks from now on a Saturday, and then we're basically finalizing our goals and then approving them the following week. So, you know, this, I mean, it's hard enough to get public engagement, but during the time of COVID and virtual meetings, it's harder still, and so I just don't know how much we're actually going to hear from people on Saturday, the 20th.
Well, what I would suggest is that you take public comment on the 17th workshop, the background workshop, you would take comment again on the 20th, and if you felt you had to, or you needed more time before the goals themselves are finalized, by all means, take them. I mean, the process is yours, the timing is really yours, and you're driving your own budget. If you could and think you might be able to, by putting it off, let's say, to the first meeting in April, and suggest that you drive a social media approach, I'm not going to guarantee that that's going to provide you the success that you need. I can say that from another city that I'm familiar with, they put this process in place and followed it for maybe three years in succession, and I'll be honest, getting the public input upfront wasn't necessarily easy. But this last time around, and it took a while to get it going, they had, in a community of 13,000, they had 160 responses. And that's pretty good statistically for anybody in any public survey.
Other questions or comments? About that, I'm sure Greta's concerned.
Bear with us for a second, folks. We're going to move Bob into Brian's office so we can hear better.
That was what that was going on there, okay?
Yeah. You think it was the computer?
Wait a second.
It's silly. It's never done that before.
Your show.
Your show.
Okay, maybe this'll make it a little bit better. I can at least say I feel comfortable sitting at this desk, so it's familiar to you. Anyway, you know, that's my answer, and, you know, we can certainly modify the approach to the degree that we can to get public input, because I absolutely agree that it is essential. And I'm certainly, as your facilitator, open to try and accommodate that in any way we can.
Yeah, I would agree in that I think we, as council and staff, probably need to put our heads together to come up with candidate goals and some of the projects under each of the goals. But once we've done that, we need to allow more time if we're going to do a survey. A survey without some proposals or without some kind of structure isn't going to get us much, and I don't want something, you know, so vague that it doesn't really give us any direction from the public input. So if we have candidate goals and some fleshing out of those with some projects so people could then chime in, the Survey Monkey or something of that sort, we need to allow a little more time from the 20th, which hopefully we'd have those candidate things by then. You know, anyway, before we actually adopt them, so that there's more of a period of time to get input. Is that something you would agree, Greta, is that kind of the, does that meet your concern? Did I make myself clear?
Yeah, I think that's the biggest concern, is that we'll have goals finalized on Saturday to approve the following week, but if there's limited public engagement, then there's sort of goals that we've done without, you know, much input. But I understand where Bob is coming from, that the previous evening, the previous Wednesday evening, we'll have that special session to look at background, and the public will have an opportunity to weigh in there. So I think it would be important for us to get the word out to the community, and this is really their opportunity, to be engaged in the goal-setting process, and they need to come in, you know, into the meeting that Wednesday night, and for those who are incredibly excited about it, come that Saturday as well. So, you know, we just will have our work cut out for us to get the word out to the community and hear from folks.
The other thing I would suggest, Madam Mayor, is that maybe, you know, we maintain the same schedule, but at the end of the March 20th, you have a list of goals that you want to set out there for community input, and then allow a time to collect that input and provide that to be forwarded to the council so that when you get to your final deliberation, which I'm willing to assist with as well, you have the opportunity to get that input. And you have to recognize that that could mean, you know, you may end up changing things, which is what the process is all about.
Yeah, I just think that we're going to sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? We will have some sense of what we're defining as goals and projects by the end of the 20th session, but I don't feel like we should try to adopt that on the 25th, because that, or 24th, I should say, because it doesn't really give a chance for public input on, you know, on that level. So if we get that far, and then we could still discuss it again, it can be an open agenda item on the 24th, but then maybe have a social media or Survey Monkey kind of thing between then, and possibly a special session again in early April. Or there's March 31st is a Wednesday, and there's April 7th, neither of which are now scheduled meetings. Those are not our regular meetings, so those are possibilities.
I just also want to put out there for the council, you know, staff and myself, well, if any members of the public or a group or entity is listening or becomes aware that the council is starting or embarking on this goal-setting session or workshop, if they want to talk to me, reach out to me on their areas of interest or any items that they want the council to consider, that's very good. You know, approach a staff member, approach myself, and get that information to us, and we'll make sure that gets for you during the workshop.
Okay. But there is something satisfying, if you're a public person, to being able to actually talk to your council members, you know, even if it's them on a screen instead of in the meeting room. I think that's important, to have that option available and for us to hear directly, so. Other comments from council members? Anybody? Greta and Jerry?
Well, this is just sort of an aside, but it occurs to me that I think all the council members at this point have been vaccinated, and I'm just wondering if there's a possibility that we could start really thinking about reopening our meetings. I mean, this is getting kind of ridiculous. I think most people would agree that, you know, the community is frustrated not being able to have access to their local government. I guess that's not in our.
Yeah, that's not the agenda item, but yeah.
What I would say, Nick, make it something else.
Oh, yeah, and there's a, Jerry?
I was just going to say, even though we may have all been vaccinated, a lot of the public hasn't been yet, but not freaked out, whatever we do to make sure that we take care of the public that it is, or something like that. I agreed with what you had said, Greta and Madge, as far as public engagement, but also, as part of the process, I guess Bob, as questions come up, and I don't really want Andy at every meeting, but if there's some things that come up, the ability to at least reach him, ask him some budget questions, because that may beg, some of our goals may beg some financial questions.
Well, I certainly, oh, yeah, that is a big part of it. It should actually be a part of that background meeting, is, you know, giving you some of dollars and cents background to form a foundation so that you can begin making some decisions. I mean, there are already decisions that you may have made that are in place and are going to eat up some of those resources. But that's, you know, that's something that you should be talking about during that background session. The other thing is, yes, it is a fast schedule. I absolutely, you know, the attempt at maybe trying to keep it with this kind of a schedule is only to promote the budget development. But ultimately, you know, if we get to a point where, you know, especially during the background phase, and I'm, you know, I have to defer to Brian on this, but if you need more information or more time, there's certainly not a problem with taking it. You just have to understand that that may shorten up the time that the staff actually has to deal with the direction once they get it.
Okay, any other comments from council members? I'm not hearing any comments from the public or from the staff who are on board here. These are obviously going to affect the staff, and I love the idea that we're being a little more proactive so that our priorities start to not only direct staff work, but also direct the budget instead of always being reactive. So this is, this is great, and I want to make sure that somebody on staff is going to be able to create some kind of Survey Monkey when we get to the stage where we have started defining what the choices are, to give the public some time to respond to those choices. And so there is some staff time involved. I guess, Brian, you're comfortable with being able to do that kind of thing?
Yes, we can, the Survey Monkey and getting information out online and get it out to the public, which is back into this process, so yes, we can do that. Then, like I said, I think I mentioned it earlier, I've been working with department heads, preparing them, preparing their thoughts on this process. We already have some draft projects that, you know, it's just a starting process in this, a starting element, you know, we're not going to, we don't want to spontaneously provide that to the council, but we want that, some information available so we can generate discussion and build on the goals that the council wants to forward.
Okay. I mean, the staff want to be enthusiastic about what they're doing, so if they have ideas, that's part of the mix, so I like that. And also, really important to get some kind of public announcement out there to our local papers, as well as the website. I, for one, read the paper, and I rarely go on websites, so I want to make sure we're covering our bases in letting people know what this whole process is. Seems like, because our meetings are usually on Wednesday, and the Willits Weekly comes out Thursday, we need to get it to them earlier. So, that's good. If there's no other questions or comments, we're going to move on with the rest of our agenda, which is city council, committee, boards, and agency reports.
Thank you, Bob.
The things that many.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So why don't we start with, we'll go the same order that Kathy and Brian. Jerry, do you have any committee or agency reports?
Well, I did attend the, that was Empire Division meeting for League of Cities on Friday, and it became more like an organizational one, the next meeting is May, they're hoping, maybe in person by then, everybody's got their hands crossed. They talked a little bit about, I guess, they had a presenter there talk about districting, which doesn't really affect us, but apparently it's going to affect some cities in California as far as instead of like we are elected at large, they're going to go to special, I guess, districts for elected council members in some cities instead. This process where they get moved into that, so they had a little presentation on that, and then just basically kind of introduced new board members, so that's all I had. And the thing I mentioned, that's it.
Okay, Larry Spansky, are you next?
I have nothing, thank you.
Oh, will you? Okay. Everybody I know is aware of the change on the Measure B situation and the fact that our ad hoc committee was ready to have some kind of public forum with the county, but there is now an offer. I think everybody already knows that. If anybody doesn't, we can explain it. I want to thank Greta for being willing and attending at least one meeting, and I think we did our best to, you know, try to define what the issues were, but it's now a moot point. Okay, so that was Larry. How about Greta?
MCO did not meet. MCO did not meet this month because there were no actionable items on the agenda, so we will meet next month. As Madge just stated, the measure. As Matt just stated, the Measure B committee, subcommittee, ad hoc committee did not meet for obvious reasons. And finally, I attended the museum advisory board meeting this morning. The museum has announced, or the board supervisors have approved, museum's plan to reopen once the county moves into the red tier, so that's exciting. They're looking forward to that. They will actually delay their reopening for two weeks after we have moved back into the red tier. They've had an increase of vandalism at the museum, especially behind the museum. The bench in front of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial was recently damaged and has now been moved inside so that it can be repaired before it's replaced. The county has installed lights behind the museum to sort of illuminate that area and try to discourage some of the worst behavior. They did point out that they have had great support from the Willets Police Department, who has been helping to patrol that area more frequently, and has really been invaluable to them over there. So there was some discussion about maybe some further security measures to be taken around the museum to try to secure that area a little better. And, let's see, there was quite a lot of discussion about a new use policy that's being updated for the museum that will hopefully make the museum's collections more accessible to county residents and people outside the county who want to access our historical items to be used in books or films or things of that nature. So a lot going on with them. And there is a new director at the county level who oversees the museum as well as the library, and I got to meet her today on the meeting. She's a great lady who I think will be a real asset to our museum and library. So that's my report.
Thank you. That was very interesting. And Suprina?
Mendocino Transit Authority only had a special meeting. We had an action item where we approved funding for an additional electric bus. So that's exciting, that puts us out of bed for two buses now to replace our police. And then most other discussions, most recently, is about ridership in preparation for life going back to somewhat normal here in the coming months and making sure that our drivers, that they're all trained and ready to go back. Right now, MTA is still encouraging people to only take essential trips, but we're looking forward and preparing for a time when people will move about for other reasons other than essential business. That's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. I have two, well, three agency reports to make here. One of them is that the Economic Development and Financing Corporation, EDFC, is meeting tomorrow at 2:00 PM. And I know that there is a loan approval on the agenda. I don't know yet whether we have any candidates for the manager or director position yet, but we will be looking for that if it's not yet. And on the 18th, a week from Thursday, at 10:00 AM, is the solid waste management meeting. And I know that we're struggling with the, a lot of extra expense during the pandemic. The waste load has gone way up, and the revenues haven't gone way up. And so we're, we have an ad hoc committee looking at the budget and trying to figure out how we're going to make it sustainable, but that's been a challenge. The third one is Sonoma Clean Power. I brought that up here, that I was willing to continue being the alternate, but I didn't think I could be the regular representative from the Mendocino County Cities. And we had a meeting of the county selection committee, which is the four city mayors, and we selected Lindy Peters of Fort Bragg City Council to be, he's enthusiastic about being the representative to Sonoma Clean Power. And a gentleman on the Point Arena City Council, whose name I didn't drop down, is going to be the alternate. So I am off the hook on that. But I do hope to get reports because I find that Sonoma Clean Power does some pretty important things for our communities on alternative energy supply. So that's, those are my two, three agencies. And the next item is Good and Welfare, and I have a couple of those I wanted to bring. Yes, Greta?
The next is actually council member reports and recommendations that have a short report I would want to make.
Okay. Actually, I would like us to just blend those 11 and 12 together. I find it's hard to decide which one is a report and which one is good and welfare, but go ahead, Greta.
I had a community member reach out to me who wants to approach the city council to get approval to put flags on Main Street in recognition of April Child Abuse Awareness Month. She wasn't sure how she should do that, so I wanted to just bring that to council and essentially ask you what I should say to her.
I don't mean to speak to them. Encouragement permit?
What is the procedure? Do you know, Jerry?
I believe it's an encouragement permit.
So I'm assuming they supply the banners and they supply the laborer to put them up and take them down? And what we need is, does the city council have to decide this, or is it staff level to decide if it's an appropriate message out there?
The encouragement permits are issued at, reviewed and issued at staff level.
It doesn't seem like it's a controversial thing, so I mean, I would think just, you all just saying it's a good thing and let Brian review it. It's people.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comment about that? And if we had been approached, for example, for Black History Month or for Women's History Month, if they had, you know, a proposal to do something like that, we could, you know, do the same sort of thing. I do think it's worth bringing up to city council just so that it's not just anybody, you know, that we have to make sure we don't have any objectionable message going out there. Jerry, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to say that I don't know what the historical or what agreements we have with the police scouts as far as they're the ones that put up the flags in general, so it's going to be in their little flag things. I think they're the ones that drill the holes out there and give them permission, but it's going to be, depending on where the flags go or whatever, I think that becomes a ministerial thing.
Is that enough guidance for you, Brian? You can deal with it from there.
Uh, if you just want to pass the contact information along, it will make this happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other reports, recommendations? And then going to Good and Welfare, I just found out that there is apparently COVID testing happening at the Veterans Hall tomorrow. I don't know the hours, but I think it's most of the day. And I want to just mention that it's a good idea for people, even if you've had the shots and even if you have 100% sure you don't have it, to get tested because the more tests come back negative, the quicker we get into the next tier down. In other words, our ratio of positive versus negative is important for getting our economy open as much as we're allowed to. So if anyone is available and wants to get tested, that's tomorrow at the Veterans Hall. And on the 14th, which is a Sunday at 3:00 PM, Will is hosting a forum on snow, fire, wind, and power outages happen, and what is going on with all the different first responders and the fire safety councils, which are actually a bunch of them local here at the sort of neighborhood level. We're having those people as guests and can answer people's questions and find out what we can do to be better prepared at the, both at the individual level but at the agency level. And I believe Brian and Chief Lizaraga might be able to attend that meeting, I'm hoping so, but we do have PG&E, Al Fire, the sheriff, and the emergency services, and the county fire safety council, so we have, you know, good representation to basically inform the public about what has happened, what we can do better going forward. That's on Sunday, the 3:00 PM. I have the, whatever, the link, so anybody needs to get the link to sign in for that, please do. It's a Zoom meeting. And one more thing is that Senator, State Senator McGuire is holding a workshop or a public forum also on the 18th in the evening, I think 6:00 or 6:30, about COVID, both, you know, all the aspects of COVID, testing and vaccinations and what tier we're in and all that stuff. So that should be also very interesting. Any other announcements of that sort or Good and Welfare? A very good meeting we had, thank you very much. We're ready to adjourn at 8:13. Thank you very much.